Good evening, folks. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting and the committee of the whole meeting immediately following the council meeting. Tonight's council meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our distinguished clerk, Vicki Kellick, to please take the roll call.
Bowery?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marks? Mayor? Pashki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. It's my pleasure to invite, whom we will soon get to know well, Joe, Jacqueline, and Ian to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Onto the agenda, folks. Item 3A is to introduce our new public work employees. Now, this order's a little different, so forgive me. Ian Morsor, our GIS technician, Jacqueline Barosio, administrative assistant in the Water Division, and of course, Joseph Linder, water sewer maintenance worker. Let's kick it off with Mr. Morsor. Ian, how are you, man?
Good, how are you doing?
How long has it been?
Since I've been here?
Yeah.
Since May, believe, 17th?
Yeah, it's been a heck of a long time, I know.
Absolutely.
You guys have been busy, I guess.
Grinding it out with Cam.
Grinding it out, no pun intended?
No, no pun intended.
No pun intended, yeah. That's good, that's good, man. Born and raised in beautiful Villa Park.
Absolutely. Now residing in St. Charles.
Now residing in St. Charles, where of course, the other guy resides.
Joe.
Yeah. Holy moly. Did you know he was moving to St. Charles?
I did not.
Attended Willbrook High School and Elmhurst University.
Yes, I just graduated back in May.
Did you really?
So, they, I did the interview process, and I thought, hey, graduating, coming up, and he's like, okay, great. So, I knocked a year off because of my military service, so...
Oh, you did? No kidding?
Yes, so I sped run that.
Wow. Congratulations and thank you for your military service.
Thank you.
It's not even on here, for gosh sakes.
Thought I put it on there, Marine Corps.
Oh, there it is. Oh, Marine Corps, yeah. Enlisted in Marine Corps and shipped off the same day?
Yes, so...
As high school graduation. So, wait a minute. Our graduations usually at, in the evening?
So, for our graduation, it's special. There, it's like, early afternoon, maybe like, noonish.
Wow.
So, I enlisted a year before that graduation date because they offered a nice bonus.
Sure.
The recruiters did. So, and they're like, well, you're gonna leave the day of your high school graduation. I'm like, alright, you know, better time than ever to just start my career, so I did that, and yeah.
So, you graduate, and it's literally pack up and you're off?
Yes, correct. I only had two hours to myself, and I hug in my parents, and then I'm gone on a plane to San Diego.
Not a bad place to go, though.
No, it was beautiful. It was, it was like vacation, almost.
You were stationed in Cherry Point?
Yes, North Carolina.
North Carolina. And it says here, deployed overseas. Are you able to tell us where you were deployed?
So, I went to Bahrain, and I was stationed there with Security Force Regiment.
No kidding?
I went to every country in the Middle East besides Syria and Yemen.
Really?
Just protecting embassies and doing a counter-drone deterrence, so. And then I was working close with Lockheed Martin. It was a lot. For six months, I was over there doing everything like that, you know, an 18-year-old would dream, so.
And how often were you able to connect with your family back here in the States?
Uh, overseas?
Yeah.
Oh, every day.
Every day you were?
Just thank God for technology and iPhones and Wi-Fi, so.
All that good. TikTok?
Well, at the time, it wasn't as popular.
I'm just kidding. So, security detail? Lots of stress?
For the most part. I mean, Marine Corps teaches you how to manage that stress, so...
I mean, you were a young, I mean, you are a young guy, but you were a young guy.
Twenty years old at the time, yeah. It was, it was very new for me, and I never thought I'd be in a position, I was a radio operator, too.
Ooh.
So, I was the only one among 30 to 40 guys that was the sole connection between one place to another. So, that was as stressed as it was, but the confidence was there, so I had nothing to worry about.
Forgive me for not knowing this, but when you are overseas, are you on a 24-hour shift? A 12-hour shift? Is it a normal?
Mostly 12-hour shifts.
Mostly 12-hour shifts.
But it, in Marine standards, you're on duty 24/7, right?
Of course, yeah.
So...
Wow. Why Elmhurst University?
Um, after spending time in the military, it's like a dorm life, and I was done with that personally, so. And Elmhurst University, my mother went there.
Oh, cool.
My brother went there, so my mother wanted to, she's like, you know, pushed me in the right direction. It was easy to commute, 10-minute drive.
Oh, yeah, it's a beautiful campus, too.
It is, it's very nice.
It's gorgeous. Your hobbies include hiking, baseball. How do you, how do you, how do you marry those two? Hiking and baseball?
Trying to stay active as much as possible. I mean, I go to Star Rock every now and then to hike, yeah, it's a great spot.
You don't hike by yourself, though?
No, I have a fiancee that I hike with.
Well, heck, man.
Yeah.
When's the big day?
Uh, next year, September 27th.
Is that right? Are we free? On the 27th?
It'll be, it'll be in West Chicago, St. Andrews, so...
Oh, nice, life is good.
Yes.
Local. And may I ask how you met your fiancee?
So, we met online, app called Bumble. She, of course, messaged me, and then we just kinda hit it off from there, so...
She, of course, messaged you?
Yeah, well, 'cause the app...
How that would work.
Oh, is that how that works?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, thank you, honey. I thought you were being cocky or something, I had no idea. So, Bumble's where the ladies...
They message you first, but I think since recently, it's changed to where...
Now, it's called fumbled?
Yeah, they fumbled that, I guess, right? So...
My God. You like to travel whenever possible? You didn't have enough travel when you were six months deployed?
I had plenty of time. I wish I can travel more right now.
Yeah, I bet.
You know, so, but, but in the military, I had the freedom to travel. I didn't really have bills to pay, so I was like, I could go where I wanted to. But now, you know, living the adult life kinda restricts you in a bit, so...
Did you always want to be in the service?
Yes, I knew I wanted to be in the service when I entered freshman year of high school.
Is that right?
Yeah, and I just knew that. My parents were against it throughout my entire high school until the day came, my father was crying, so I knew this was the right thing, so...
He's probably crying now, watching you on TV.
Oh, he might be, I don't know. He's in Florida, actually, so...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, he's living it up.
Do they have ROTC at Willbrook High School, or no?
I think they just instituted it recently.
They just did, okay.
My mother sent me a, it was a job for it. They're like, there's like, in this ROTC thing they're starting up, I'm like, I'm not doing that, but thank you for letting me know, so...
And what did you study at Elmhurst?
I started geographic information systems.
You did, okay.
So...
And that comes natural to you, I would assume?
I fell in love with maps, and I actually did a little bit of GIS overseas, too.
You did?
Yeah, helping with creating firing ranges for the Jordanian forces, so they knew where to shoot and everything. It evolved, um...
Fascinating.
The products we use for here at Geneva, so...
Is that right?
Absolutely.
Wow. So, what else should, I mean, there's so much to know about you, but what else should we know about you? What else do you wanna share?
I mean, ask away. I mean, there's a million things, like you said, to ask away, 'cause I don't know where to start.
Ask away, folks.
If not, it's okay.
Where you gonna make your home after the big wedding?
Uh, well, 'cause we're renting right now, so two years will come, it'll be roughly after...
Figure something out?
Yeah, we're looking for here or St. Charles. We love both the areas, to be honest.
Oh, absolutely, can't go wrong, right?
Oh, yeah, I mean, the downtown areas for both St. Charles and Geneva here, it's beautiful.
And so far, so good, your time with Geneva?
Oh, yeah, it's great. It's better than I thought it was gonna be.
Is that right?
My father, 'cause he is a building manager for District 205 in Elmhurst.
Oh, sure.
He was like, he was pushing me in this direction, he's like, you should do it because pension, you know, the connections you can make, and it's a pretty nice lifestyle.
Oh, you know, it's funny you mention that, 'cause later on the agenda, it's about eliminating pensions.
Oh.
I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
No, I was not.
Do you wanna change any of your answers?
Uh...
Oh, but you did make all the maps, oh, that's good. That's good. This is the guy who made the maps.
Yes.
That's good.
Stephanie and I were...
Well, we are delighted to have you on board.
Thank you.
And thank you again for your service. Very, very, very impressive.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Comments or questions for our friend? Mr. Kilburg?
For the benefit of the public, why don't you just give us a brief description of what, what you do? Job description and some of the projects, maybe a project or two that you're currently working on?
So, currently, we support Public Works and Utilities, creating a map so they can see visually where everything is at. Projects I have worked on was the redistricting with Stephanie. I also updated the Art on Fire webpage that we currently have up there, so eventually that will take into place. Right now, I'm learning to do JavaScripting and maybe a little bit Python work that'll help connect everything, flow everything together in terms of our enterprise and Esri products, so...
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're dismissed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. In order, as it appears on the agenda, Jacqueline, good evening and welcome.
Hello, good evening.
Jacqueline, I have received a note that says, please ask Jacqueline when her first day was.
My first day was July 15th.
Anything big happen that day?
You know, I hear there was quite a few storms that weekend, so it was a pretty hectic day to start.
It had to have been unbelievable.
Yeah, it was, uh, I think it was kinda nice to just be thrown in there, but it was good to also kinda see how, firsthand, how the team really works together, so that was really nice to kinda see.
Was there any point you said, who is the GIS guy, and why can't, can I get that information?
No.
Never?
No.
Grew up in Oswego, or nearby Oswego?
I grew up in Oswego.
In Oswego?
Mm-hmm.
You still call Oswego home today?
I do, yep.
Nice. Married for almost three years and just had your first little one, a little boy.
Mm-hmm.
Benicio?
Yep.
Very cool. Is that a family name?
It is not. That was, um, funny enough, I love the movie Sandlot, and I knew I wanted his nickname to be Benny.
Oh, no kidding?
And I, I found a name that worked with Benny.
That's awesome. A December baby?
December baby.
Oh, my gosh. You have a beautiful dog?
I've got a dog.
Named Gabby.
Mm-hmm.
I push to have more dogs any chance I get. How's that going for you?
I, I talked him into fostering for a little bit.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, 'cause we were close.
Close, but not quite yet?
Not quite yet, so maybe in a little bit.
You come from a family of four girls?
It's five girls, so...
Oh, excuse me, four, yeah, four sisters, holy moly.
So, there's five of us.
Currently, four nieces. Your son's the first boy in the family.
Yep.
Wow.
So, that was, that's been interesting, trying to navigate, um, how to take care of a boy. I'm not used to that.
No, they're weird people, aren't they?
They're a little weird, different than girls.
I know. Do you, do you call your son Benny, or do you call him Benicio?
I, we call them both, we wanna get used to both names.
Very cool. I originally went to school for hospitality and tourism management with an association, or an associate's degree in baking.
Mm-hmm.
What's your favorite baked good? And have you brought them in yet, too, Public Works?
I have not brought them in yet. Um, I used to specialize more in cakes, decorating cakes.
Is that right?
Um, and now it's more, I can enjoy a little bit more now that I'm not doing it for a living. Um, so, little bread sweets, always, uh, you know, holidays come around, I'm, I'm the one that wants to do something sweet for everybody, so trying some, you know, new things.
Do you bake to just kind of unwind as well, or is it...
Nah, nowadays, not really.
Yeah, I was gonna say, now with Benny?
I don't have too much time now. Uh, before, yeah, it was, it's something enjoyable, I can relax doing it.
That's wonderful. I'm coming from the hotel world. As my last job, I was the catering and sales event for W Chicago City Center. That's a big gig.
Yes. It was, uh, pretty big, pretty stressful, a lot of work.
Ugh.
Um, that was pretty much the main reason to come down here. My commute was pretty long.
Yeah, so, the commuting was not fun?
No. So, that was the main reason to come down here. Um, wanted to find somewhere a lot closer that wasn't gonna be, you know, three hours every day wasting my time, especially with just having Benny.
Yeah.
Um, I wanted to be able to actually have my days with him after work.
Now, as the catering sales executive, you weren't there just typical hours, too, correct? Or were you principally?
This was, yeah, for the most part, I was there, uh, like a nine-to-five hour. Um, but I did have to adjust my schedule a lot because we had a lot of events that I would have to stay for, I would have to prep for, so I, I did have to make myself flexible, um, which, you know, could get rough when I'm getting home at like, 10:00 PM.
Absolutely. Do you know Chef Robey by chance, at the Old Chocolate Kitchen?
I don't, no.
He began his career similar to yours.
Oh, yeah?
And it was downtown, it was unusual hours, and of course, now he has this extraordinary location right on Third Street, so...
Yeah.
You should go in and...
I definitely will.
Absolutely, man. What else should we know about you, Jacqueline? And do you prefer Jacqueline?
Jacqueline or Jack.
Or Jack?
Yes.
Very cool. So far, so good? It's been not even a month?
Not even a month, I think this is my third week, so, um, still quite a bit to learn, a lot, um, a lot going on.
A lot going on.
But it's, it's a good place. Everyone's been really great, been really helpful.
Good.
Everyone's been answering all my million questions I have, so it's nice to know that I'm, I'm in a good place.
You are in a good place, and we're delighted to have you.
No, thank you.
To make it even gooder.
Yeah.
How's that?
Good.
Floor's open for comments or questions from the council, too.
Thank you.
Well, there'd be, well, where's Babica? Will there be an announcement made when Jack brings in goodies?
Afterwards.
Well played, sir. Well played. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us.
Of course, good to be on board.
Okay, Joe, you prefer Joe.
Correct.
Come on up, Joe. Water sewer maintenance worker.
That's correct.
You call St. Charles home.
I do.
Now, here's a fascinating stat about you, and we talked about this, I think, before.
Yes.
Twenty years in St. Charles at the Blue Goose as a butcher.
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years?
And I...
Because you were never teasing about Blue Goose.
Yeah, it, uh, it was a wonderful career, but, uh...
That's amazing.
I sought out the Public Works when they closed and just to further my career and abilities and see what I could do with myself, so...
Worked for the St. Charles Township for three years?
Yep, yeah, I was there, after I left the Goose, I went there, uh, and then was presented with this opportunity to learn and grow at the city of Geneva, so I'm excited to keep it going and see where it takes me.
We're glad to have you. Now, when there's cookouts at Public Works, does anybody turn to you?
They haven't yet, but...
They have, they will now?
I'm sure they will, yeah.
And dessert courtesy of Jacqueline?
Yeah, there you go.
My God, it's perfect. Born and raised and have lived in St. Charles your entire life.
Yep, yep.
So, you're an OG, St. Charles East?
Yes, graduated in 1998, Moldi school.
I was just gonna ask you if you were a mold child.
Yeah, yeah.
You were.
Right as I, the year I graduated, they rectified it, and they didn't have to deal with it anymore, so...
So, you had the, the, the different little outstations that you had?
Yeah, all the mobile units and...
Oh, my God.
All that fun stuff.
Wow. Two kids, ages eight and 10.
Yep, yep, Blake and Savannah.
Nice.
They're in my world, they keep me going and...
Indeed, they do.
Been married for 13 years.
Wow.
My, my wife had Blue Goose and...
Okay, tell us that story.
She worked in the bakery, and I worked in the meat department, and...
Sounds like an NBC mini-series.
I would get donuts every day, and she would, you know, that's just how we met.
And she called the police, and then you get...
And one day, she stopped serving me donuts 'cause it's not good for me. So, I'm like, well, okay, that's how we're playing it, then let's go out, see how this is gonna turn out, so...
So, you literally said, okay, that's how we're gonna play this, so go out with me?
Yeah.
Well, nothing like direct, what the heck?
Yeah, so...
No kidding?
Yeah.
That's a great story.
And, yeah.
Wow. And how are, how are Blake and Savannah doing well?
They're good, they're good, yeah.
What do you got, fourth grade and fifth grade, right?
Uh, third, third and fifth.
Third and fifth?
Yeah.
Wow.
They're about a week out, I think, before they start.
Yeah, 'cause St. Charles starts in the 16th?
Yeah.
That's amazing.
So, ready to send them back.
Will they ultimately matriculate to St. Charles East?
I believe so, yes.
Where Dad went?
Yep.
Well, that's pretty cool.
Keep them out of North and, yeah, so...
Very cool. You enjoy all the challenges that are thrown your way with this job?
Yeah, um...
How many, how many water main breaks have you been on?
I am not gonna...
Sorry, Rich.
Any breaks yet.
Oh, good.
We've done several service lines, uh, new service lines.
Yeah.
I've connected a few, and it's, you know, pretty strenuous down in the hole, trying to manipulate pipe and...
I can imagine.
Get it where it goes and, you know, make sure it's all home before you tighten it up and...
And you're trained to be in that?
Yeah, confined space and...
Confined space, yeah, it's a...
It's really, it's a lot different than you'd think it is, but...
In terms of...
Of being in the confined space and, you know, you think you're just coming to work on pipe and...
Yeah, it's gotta be...
Do this and that, but you're in the hole, you know. Uh, I saw a live leak done, and the water's coming out, he's gotta cut the pipe.
Right.
Put the new valve on, close it off, you know, and it's, it's really interesting to see, so...
And how do you unwind at night after a full day here?
Um, I have a nice backyard, big fire pit, so I like to sit by the fire and have a Coke and just relax.
Have a Coke?
Yeah.
What else, Joe?
Um, that's really about it, unless anybody's...
How long you been on board?
I've been here since the middle of June.
Oh, wow.
So, I was here for the July 15th storms.
Yes, you were.
It was a...
I was teasing with you, 'cause you're so nice and tan.
A lot of brush to be picked up.
I think you spent a lot of time outdoors, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we did. And, uh, you know, I helped them haul the brush to Kramer and get that, you know, taken care of, and then went back to my other duties when they released me from that, so...
Yeah, we had lunch together one day.
Yeah, we did.
That was nice.
Yeah.
And I know that Mr. Babica has statistics regarding the total brush collected, and it's pretty darn impressive.
Yeah, I was blown away by it.
Isn't that something?
So...
Now, did you do, I had heard a rumor that all the brush collected was just dumped in St. Charles. Now, did you do, I had heard a rumor that all the brush collected was just dumped in St. Charles. Is that an accurate statement?
No. Close, but not.
The other direction.
Next town over.
Yeah, the next town over, exactly. Very good. Floor's open to the council.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Welcome aboard, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being with us.
Yes, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Very cool. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be by this council routine, and those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Motion by Kassarag, seconded by Bowery. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to Waser. Item number eight, municipal bills for payment. We. Oh, excuse me, seven reports, fiscal year 2025 first quarter goals status report. We're entertaining a motion to accept the report as presented. Is there such a motion? Motion by Pashki and Bowery. Any comments or questions? There was a couple of questions asked previously this afternoon that were provided answers to by Ms. Dawkins. Anything else? If not, a voice vote is sufficient to accept the fiscal year 2025 first quarter goals status report. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent. Item seven A has been approved. Number eight is municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total expenditures are $2,652,583.8.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
The motion to approve the bills as presented, which also appear in the city council members' packet and on the city's website, has been offered by Alder Person Bruno. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Person Bowery. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
With eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two absent, the bills have been approved by this council and will be paid before the end of the calendar year. Item ten A, consider ordinance number 2024-30 granting, one, a comprehensive plan amendment from parking to single-family residential; two, a zoning map amendment from D R S C M, residentially scaled commercial mixed-use district, to D S F H R, single-family high-density residential district; and three, an amendment to the Fourth Street parking lot planned unit development. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Bowery makes the motion. Bruno makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the subject property is one of two parcels that were part of the city-owned property known as the Fourth Street Parking Lot P U D that were recently declared surplus and authorized to be sold. Due to the sloping topography and location in a floodplain, the majority of the western half of the P U D, which includes these two parcels, was not developed. In May 2024, the city entered into a sales agreement with Mr. Coon for parcel one. Uh, he has proposed to purchase parcel one and combine it with his property at 420 South Street. In order to do so, the applicant is requesting, um, the four action items that were read on the agenda. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on July 25th, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended the city council approve, uh, those requests. With us this evening, we do have the applicant in the audience and also our city planner, Matt Busing.
From the dais, are there questions for Mr. Busing or Mr. Coon? Seeing none, sensing none, simple majority vote is required to pass this item, item ten A. City Clerk, Kelly, please take the roll.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With eight votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, item ten A has been approved by this city council. Item eleven is public comment. We invite anyone joining us this evening in the room to share with us your thoughts. The podium is yours. It's your turn to speak, our turn to listen, and the floor is open. Mr. Simon. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, my name's Mike Simon. I'm owner of The Little Traveler at 404 South Third Street, and I'm here on behalf of the Geneva Chamber of Commerce, um, to review the Arts Fair. Hopefully, many of you had a chance to go to the Arts Fair. This year, we had a hundred and twenty-seven artists. Fifty-three of them were new. Fifty-nine of them were from out of state, and artists came from sixteen states. Um, if you don't know, the Geneva Arts Fair is consistently, uh, listed in the top two hundred arts fairs in the country, has been for the past ten years. Um, and it's because of our relationship with the city. So our thanks go to the police department, the, uh, fire department, Public Works Department, and all of you for your support in making this and all of Geneva's festivals possible. Um, in case you don't know, uh, the chamber is sponsoring a fundraiser for, uh, Michael Olson, the staff of Stockholmes at Stockholm, or, um, up north on Second Street during the concourse on August 25th. Um, lots and lots of neighboring businesses and restaurants are gonna be donating prices that, um, will be auctioned off, so hopefully you'll be able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else under public comment? Mr. Rule. Welcome, sir.
I have a totally unrelated question. Do you guys play musical chairs or, uh, this is?
Yeah.
Is there a seniority thing?
Yeah, we switched it up in May.
Oh, okay. Has nothing to do with seniority or anything, huh? All right, you guys haven't seen me for a while, but that doesn't mean I've gone away. Um, I'll just give you a quick refresher here. Um, this process, believe it or not, began over eighteen months ago when a forty-year-old diseased tree on the city parkway fell on my house. The city asked me to fill out an history report, which I did. The city asked me to get quotes for repairs, which I did. In December of 2022, a month later, my claim was denied, and to this day, the city has never sent an official to my house to assess and inspect the damage. You may recall that I have spoke to all but one city council meeting between last April and November to plead my case. During that time, I have repeatedly asked for a sit-down meeting with city officials to try to resolve this and has been denied. Having no other alternative, in November of last year, I filed a small claims court case, uh, requesting, uh, $8,784.64 plus court cost. At this time, an attorney has been assigned to the city, um, but the city is not currently paying this individual. That individual being paid by your insurance representative, Sedwick, Argonaut, or Trident, or whatever they choose to call themselves. I don't know, it changes pretty, pretty frequently. But nobody wants to see to confirm that, but I don't know who else would be paying the bill. In February of last, this past February, I did ask what Mr. Rose, since you're attorney, uh, had billed the city. And he had billed, uh, he had, at that time, he had billed, uh, Sedwick over $4,000 today. I can only, my educated guess is it's probably three or four times that amount now. Even though that you're not being billed directly from Mr. Rose, don't be so naive to think that you're not gonna eventually end up paying that. That's how insurance companies work. Anybody's ever been in a car accident knows your rates go up. Sooner or later, Sedwick could get their money back from you, from the city, from we, the taxpayers. The other thing that kind of disturbs me about this whole thing is a taxpayer. Uh, the city has an attorney. This isn't some Aaron Brockovich case here, for Christ's sake. This is, this is a small claims case. I, I, it, it, it just disturbs me as a taxpayer that that kind of money's being spent. I guess it's pretty easy when you're spending somebody else's money. Anyway, initial court date was set for December, December fifteenth, twenty-three. A week before that, Mr. Rose tried to pull a fast one and asked, and provided a motion for a summary judgment, which is basically ask the judge to, to decide the case without ever hearing my side of the story. Judge Tarter was having none of that. A week later, he denied that claim. Set the court date for, uh, let's see, what is the date? Let me get the exact date here. For trial of May fourteenth, twenty-four. In April, Mr. Rose contacted me and asked to change the date because of his son's graduation. I guess he didn't know his son was graduating. I don't know. I would think he would know, but he didn't. Uh, I agreed to that, and now we have a new court date of August fourteenth, one week from this Thursday. One week from this Thursday. Initially, in an email exchange with Mr. Rose, I asked again for a sit-down meeting, uh, to resolve the matter, and his response was that, uh, and his response was, I should direct all my questions to him and, and nobody else. I have a problem with that. When, what, a third party hears something, they put their spin on it, and it doesn't get relayed the way it was, it was, uh, directed. So I, I, all he wanted to do was get information out of me. He also admitted that he was ultimately not the decision-maker, so I saw no sense in even talking to him. Uh, I mean, all he really wanted was to find out what I knew. So here we are, one week before trial, and I remember something my dad once told me. It's better to speak to the horse's mouth, not the other end, because it can get pretty smelly. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, if you'll check your email in the morning, you'll find an email from me copying the entire city council with a proposal for settling this thing. As far as communicating with Mr. Rose is concerned, I'll leave that up to you. Uh, speaking of Mr. Rose, it's no secret that attorneys work on billable hours, okay? It's not to his advantage to settle this thing. He gets a bonus for going to, for court time. He's already made three appearances. One on, one on his own behalf. The other thing that disturbs me a little bit is money being paid to him and outside entities is leaving this community. It is leaving this community, and it will never come back. If you were to settle to me, with me, that money stays in the community. Does that make any sense? As a taxpayer and a citizen, I'm imploing you to stop the bleeding and settle. If we go to, if we go to trial, regardless of the outcome, there's no guarantee that the plethora, quote, plethora of FOIAs that I have submitted are gonna stop. In fact, I can almost guarantee you they will not. If you were to settle, if you agree to my proposal, I will stop them, and I will sign a document to that effect. If we go to trial, I will also adjust my, my cash demand for, uh, inflation and interest over the last eighteen months. If you're to accept my proposal, I will not do that. Okay? I urge you to read it, see if it makes sense to you. If it doesn't, I guess I'll see you next Thursday. As a plaintiff in this case, I can't wait. As a taxpayer, please stop the bleeding. Please. Questions? I guess not. Makes no sense to me how you continue to throw money at this thing when it would be so easily solved. Thank you.
Onto new business from the dais. Anyone about anything? If not, happy to entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Kassarag makes the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. The committee of the whole meeting will begin in just a few moments.
I'd like to, uh, call the committee of, uh, the whole meeting for August fifth, twenty twenty-four to order. Uh, I'm Alderman Dean Kilburg. I serve in the third ward with Becky Ruby. And, uh, our agenda this evening, uh, I'll let the record show that all, uh, that eight of the council members are in attendance, two absent, the same as the, uh, excuse me, the committee of the whole meeting, there are eight in attendance. Marx and, uh, Mayor are, uh, not present. Item two, approve committee of the whole minutes from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and joint committee of the whole, uh, Strategic Plan Advisory Committee meeting minutes from July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno, seconded by Swanson. Voice vote, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Uh, under, uh, business this evening, item A. Recommend approval of resolution accepting quote for construction material testing and geotechnical services with National Soil Testing LLC in the amount not to exceed, uh, $33,442.50. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Pashki, seconded by Bowery. Ms. Dawkins, an overview?
Okay, so construction materials are tested for capital improvement projects for quality assurance. Geotechnical services determine the existing roadway cross-sections for future projects and the testing of soils and spoils before disposal to remain compliant with current state regulations. Four quotes were received and summarized in the packet. National Soil Testing LLC submitted the lowest responsible quote in the amount of $33,442.50. They have done this work, type of work for the city of Geneva in the past and have performed satisfactorily. Uh, if you do have additional questions, we do have Director Babica in the audience.
Kostari, Kostarag? Um, if you don't mind, Rich, I was, uh, I was just curious why, like, Geneva Construction and other companies don't include this in, you know, their own contracts, their own bids, and why we always do it separately.
This is a contract for use by the city throughout the calendar year, not just for a particular project.
Oh, okay. I, that's, this was our building project for the summer, or the streets project. Okay, thank you.
Good question, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Babica? If not, there was quite a disparity. Uh, the low bid was, uh, as I said, thirty-three thousand, four forty-two, and they ranged, uh, we had sixty-seven thousand, nine fifty, seventy-nine thousand, four sixty-five, and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars. So, um, that is an attractive bid. Quite a disparity.
It is, but compared to last year, where we only received one bid, we were pretty excited to have four quotes.
Good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Do you think we're prepared to vote? Uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item two, recommend approval of ordinance setting, uh, compensation for elected municipal officials by amending Title I Administrative, Chapter Four, Mayor, Chapter Five, City Council, and Chapter Six, Municipal Officers and Employees of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion to bring this forward? Moved by Kassarag, seconded by Bowery. Uh, we'll open the floor for discussion. Obviously, this was something that we discussed, uh, at our, uh, uh, special meeting, and I'm sure that there'll be some additional discussion this evening. We had two alderpeople that were, uh, not in attendance. Maybe they have some questions, or they, um, might have something they'd like to share. Okay?
Sure.
And Ruby?
Thank you. I, I guess, um, I know we've talked about this a few times. I, I guess I'm just curious, um, since I missed last week, what the driving factor was, um, for this argument and how the amount was decided upon. Um, I, I'm assuming that it's geared towards uncontested races, but if, if there's more to it, I would love to be caught up a little bit.
I think there were a number of, uh, thoughts that came forward. I think obviously that was one of them, of the fact that, uh, no action had been taken on the, on the, uh, alter, uh, alderman since nineteen ninety-seven, the mayor since two thousand and seven. Uh, there may be others that the, uh, the council might wanna highlight as well. Bowery?
Um, so, yeah, I think, uh, certainly in order to try to make this seem like something, in my mind, I think one of the main arguments is in order to indicate that there is some compensation. It's a lot of time we all put in for it. Obviously, it's nobody's full-time job. Um, but I think people take things more seriously when they're compensated. Um, and there had been no increase. Um, if we look just at, um, cost of living increases since then, so inflation, really, I guess, um, it would have, uh, more than, or close to doubled what it is now, which is $300 a month. Um, we arrived at the amount, which is just an increase of a hundred dollars a month, um, looking at, uh, neighboring communities and arriving at the seventieth percentile. I advocated for more. I think if we wanna have a more diverse group of people on the council, it behooves us to, um, make it more possible for someone who may have, um, less income to rely on outside of this or more expenses. Um, so I think it's great that a lot of, maybe all of us do this because of our sense of, um, dedication to the city, but I think work should be compensated across the board. Um, I don't think we expect any of our staff to come to work without paying them, and I think if we want this to be a respectable job, um, you know, we need to show that. Again, you know, it's not the same as a full-time job. Um, it's not being compensated that way, but I think that was the, the reasoning, um, that was shared, uh, amongst the council, but I'm happy to have others, uh, elaborate further.
I think, uh, the implementation of this is something I think, uh, people need to understand as well, that, uh, maybe, uh, Ms. Dawkins, uh, could give us an overview as it relates to the implementation, if it was to pass.
Sure. Um, so according to state statute, um, they dictate that the compensation for officers who hold elective office for a definitive term shall neither be increased nor diminished during that term and shall be fixed at least one hundred and eighty days before the beginning of the terms of officers whose compensation is to be fixed. So any change to the compensation of elected municipal officers would only apply to those elected or appointed during the next election on April first, twenty twenty-five, taking office on May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
So in other words, those that are elected in the, uh, upcoming election, the, uh, the increase, uh, would go into effect May first. Those that are not standing for election this cycle, theirs would not go into effect until those that are elected, uh, in twenty twenty-seven are seated on May first, twenty twenty-seven. And, uh, in that case, we have five aldermen that are up, uh, and there'll be five that, uh, will be up for election again in twenty twenty-seven. Yes?
I neglected to note that, um, I think this was Alder Person Mayor's suggestion. In order to not fall so far behind in the future, there's also a suggestion to peg future increases to inflation so that each time there was an increase with each subsequent election, um, there would, um, the amount would be increased, um, to keep it on par with the amount that we've set now, which is $4,800 a year. Um, I think that's spelled out, um, pretty clearly. Thanks.
So the impact over the next two years will essentially be, um, as it relates to the alder people, would be $6,000 over the next two years, and then, uh, it would increase to $12,000 then in twenty twenty-seven with whoever's elected. And, uh, I guess that's, uh, that's it. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to add? Uh, Ruby?
Thank you. So I'm not sure if this is germane, but looking at our compensation, I, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other about it. I see both sides. Um, I'm not, I, I think it's a nice thing to do. I'm not convinced that it's gonna make a big difference in the objective of, um, interesting more people, but again, I'm, I'm not, I'm pretty indifferent about this topic, but what I am curious about is we have the authority to increase our stipend. What other roles have stipends in the city? Is that public knowledge? Like JIMA, for example?
So they're not paid on a stipend. They're paid, um, like on a point system?
Okay.
When they volunteer. It's a completely
Completely different.
Different.
Okay. Are there any other bodies that operate similarly to ours?
Not that are paid any compensation, no.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just felt weird about saying, oh, we deserve a raise.
Well, and again, I think that's why the statute's written the way it's written, so that technically you're not making a determination for yourselves. You're making a determination for future bodies.
Sure. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, then it's, it relates to what we'll be taking, uh, bringing forward from the committee of the whole this evening. That would be the, uh, the ordinance number twenty twenty-four then. Uh, that would be what we're referring to, if, if I understand it correctly.
Right, so in the packet was a draft ordinance. Um, it's actually not numbered yet. We don't number them until
Oh, okay.
Um, they're recommended for approval, but it does cover the, uh, the ma, the position or the elective office of mayor, city council, city clerk, and city treasurer.
Is that clear to everyone? If not, uh, is there any other questions? If not, uh, would you please read the roll on this one?
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
It's unanimous, and this will come before the council and, uh, at the, uh, city council meeting, uh, next week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. We have, uh, one more item on the agenda this evening, item C, and, uh, this is one that we also, uh, discussed recently. Uh, this discussion, uh, is the, uh, recommendation regarding ward redistricting, and, uh, Ms., uh, Dawkins, uh, did, uh, did some work on this, and she'll be able to present that. Is there a motion to, uh, discuss? Seconded, moved by Bowery, seconded by Pashki. Okay, uh, Ms. Dawkins, do you wanna sort of, uh, bring us up to speed with some of the, uh,
Sure.
The modifications that you've brought forward?
So I just have a, a little introduction, and then we'll get to the modifications.
Okay.
Um, so at the strategic planning workshop last November, the consensus of the city council was to consider ward redistricting since the last redistricting occurred in December nineteen ninety-six for the nineteen ninety-seven election. Since that time, the population has grown by nearly five thousand inhabitants, and the result is that the wards are no longer nearly equal in population, with Ward Four having nearly twenty-seven percent of the population. Redistricting is recommended due to shifts in population to adhere with the one-person-one-vote principle. Redistricting may occur if it appears from any official decennial census that it is necessary to redistrict due to more or fewer wards based on population or for any other reason. Before any other reason provision has been held to authorize a city council to redistrict the city whenever in its sound discretion it had sufficient reason to do so. In either circumstance, the city council shall immediately proceed to redistrict the city and shall hold the next city election in accordance with the new redistricting. The Illinois Municipal Code outlines the procedures to follow in redistricting a city, specifically in the formation of wards, the number of inhabitants of the city The number of inhabitants of the city immediately preceding the division of the city into wards shall be as nearly equal in population, and the ward shall be as of compact and contiguous territory as practicable. Wards shall be created in a manner so that, as far as practicable, no precinct shall be divided between two or more wards. At a special committee of the whole meeting on July 29th, 2024, the committee of the whole reviewed two potential redistricting options, by precinct and by population. The city administrator recommended the option by population as it most closely aligned with the statutory requirements, and maintained two alderpersons in each ward with staggering terms. The by precinct option had several challenges, included leaving only one incumbent alderperson in Ward 4 and three incumbent alderpersons in Ward 2. It would also require that five of the current incumbents change wards. Following some discussion, the city council requested that this item be brought to the committee of the whole for further discussion and other potential options based upon feedback received from the city council at the special committee of the whole meeting. So, included in this evening's packet were three additional considerations, or three additional options, and the considerations related thereto. So, Option A, which was by population, is based upon feedback. You have equal distributions of population by wards. Each ward has two incumbents with staggering terms. The wards do divide seven of the 18 precincts. Two incumbents with terms expiring in 2025 change wards, and as suggested, it splits the downtown into two wards with that line running up Third Street, and then, as suggested, Ward 4 boundary would be at Randall Road instead of Cambridge, so it would move one block west. The second option, and as soon as I go through all three, I have them that I can throw up on the screen for you to take a look at, but the section, second option, Option B, is by population, again, based upon feedback I heard last week. Again, relatively equal distribution of population by wards. Each ward has two incumbents with staggering terms. The wards divide six of the 18 precincts. Two incumbents with terms expiring in 2025 change wards. And then this one, it incorporates the two comments from Option A, and it also keeps the Eagle Brook neighborhood in one ward. In this option, Ward 5 would extend from the westernmost city limit to the easternmost city limit. And then lastly, Option C is again one shown by precinct, so no precinct are divided between wards. Each ward has two incumbents with staggering terms. Two incumbents with terms expiring in 2025 would change wards. In this case, though, however, Ward 4 is not contiguous, and the population is not as equally distributed, where it ranges from 17% to 22%, and it does not address the couple comments that I heard from the committee of the whole. So, pursuant to state statute, should the city council desire to move forward with the redistricting, it shall be completed not less than 30 days before the first day set by the general election law for the filing of candidate petitions for the next succeeding election for city officers. The first day for filing petitions is November 12th, 2024, so any redistricting ordinance would need to be passed no later than October 13th, 2024. I think I might have to go slide it over, but that's my intro, so it's back to you, Chair.
Thank you. I guess the question is, how would you like to proceed? Would you like to go through all three? We had people that weren't a part of that when we discussed. Maybe it would be good to go through the three progressively, A, B, and C, and we can look and maybe discuss each of these as we review them on the screen, if that's okay with everyone? Okay, we'll start with Option A, and this was the one that was presented to us by staff initially. Put it to the floor, then, any comments?
So, this is actually different than the one that was presented initially. This one is basically the same as last week, except you'll notice-
Slight change here.
We moved the Ward 5 west one block on the Third Street divider, so it runs up the middle of Third Street, and then we took that one section that was east of Randall, but west of Cambridge. That is now, we moved that line to Randall. Other than that, it's the same as what you saw last week.
So, a slight modification there. That was the suggestion to keep Third Street together, and so that would really move that fifth ward then to Western Avenue, right? On the west, the lower half. That would be Western Avenue.
Yeah, so, and the pointer is red, so you can't see it. But we're that kind of, gray and red, that's Western Avenue, but then Fifth Ward continues on over-
Right, above, right. Okay, any comments or anything to add as it relates to Option A? Clear to everyone? Bruno?
Yeah, I appreciate the splitting down Third Street. While I feel that, I haven't really seen residential representation get territorial amongst here at the council. I feel like everyone has 10 alderpeople representing them for reasons I can't explain. I think having multiple wards represent the commercial districts just seems right, so I appreciate that.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, why don't we move on to B, then? And you want to give us a description as to, again, obviously, you read a description of what's proposed here as a possibility?
So, this option, again, is similar to the one you just saw. The difference here, though, however, is that it keeps all of Eagle Brook in one. If you'll recall on the previous map, I'll show you real quick. The boundary line for the Fifth Ward followed Fargo Avenue, so that's where that gray and the red kind of go.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not very, this line. So, on the next map, you'll see that now the line is the railroad tracks. What this one does, however, is it does extend, Ward 5 would go all the way from border to border, east to west. It does keep the line up the middle of Third Street, as we talked about in the first one, and it does keep the border on Fourth, Ward 4, as Randall, again, not Cambridge, if that makes sense. So, this is Randall, and then Third Street. So, those two changes are incorporated, and then it added this into Ward 2, but that required to get the populations correctly. That's why Ward 5 that is split, or runs across.
Thank you. Bowring?
So, between these two that we've seen, well, actually, I like best the one that was presented last week, in part because it's got the closest to even split on the numbers. We're doing this really mainly because the numbers have gotten so far out of whack with not addressing this for so long, that, you know, we're at 27% for the largest and 17% for the smallest. It's a pretty significant gap. So, I would like to get as close to 20% across the board as we can practically, keeping contiguous, compact districts, and my concern with this district is twofold. One, I think having Ward 5 stretch across the entirety of Geneva does not seem like a compact district to me. It's contiguous, I don't think it's compact. My other issue has to do, I guess, with the motivating reason for this, which is if there's an effort to try to keep Eagle Brook all in one ward, I think that opens a whole box of worms about every other neighborhood that has to have an arbitrary line drawn somewhere through it. There are other neighborhoods and other communities that will be split across wards. I happen to think that's a benefit. I think we do a better job when more alderpersons are invested in more parts of the city. I think that's a good reason for the change Alderperson Bruno asked for with keeping the commercial corridor down Third Street part of two wards. I think it's great that now the commercial corridor along East State Street could be shared by three wards, not just two. So, you know, a constituent brought up the issue that in Option B, all of a sudden, we have our one dedicated affordable housing completed development now separated from its most immediate neighbors and in a different ward. So, I think the question is, what is the harm to Eagle Brook if it is separated, and do we want to open this can of worms where we're looking at the potential, I don't know, feelings of different neighborhoods? Like, we have to draw lines somewhere. I think, to some extent, they wind up being a bit arbitrary, and I think, for me, the overriding concern is keeping the population as close to even as possible. So, my first choice is actually the map we saw last week, because there, Ward 4, which was the one that is currently 27%, comes all the way down to 20.5%. Option A is a close second to me, but even there, you're moving up to 20.9%. So, already, we're, you know, we're not making as much progress to me. That's 0.4%, but, you know, I think if we're trying to really make sure that everybody has equal representation, that means making sure that our wards are as balanced as possible. And then, I guess, I'll point out, like, we're halfway through this decennial period, so I'm glad that we're taking it up, and I hope we can evolve a process to take it up more regularly. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Alderperson Maladra?
I agree with much of what Alderperson Bowring said. I think the primary criteria that we need to look at in redistricting is population and compact and contiguous, I'll call them districts or wards. When I look at Option B, especially Ward 5, I see contiguous but not compact, and it spans the entire city, and I think that that's a challenge in its own right. When I look at Option A, I think that each ward, as Alderperson Bowring pointed out, population is more evenly distributed. Each district is compact and contiguous. It ticks off the primary criteria. Regarding any neighborhood being kept in a single ward, I think it's a mistake to equate neighborhoods with political unit boundaries. My neighborhood has two streets that are not incorporated into the city of Geneva. When we walk around the block, we talk with each other, we wave. When we go to the block party, there's no name tag that says, "I'm not in Geneva." You're just part of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is something that rides above the political district drawings that we may do, and in fact, I think, as Alderperson Bowring pointed out, it results in a neighborhood having influence over four representatives, or a neighborhood being represented by four alderpersons as opposed to two, basically amplifying the voice of that neighborhood. Looking at the Fifth Ward as it's drawn today, we have a downtown that's divided, we span the river, we have different neighborhoods knitted together by something, but none of those neighborhoods necessarily feels proud to be a member of the Fifth Ward. Each neighborhood is its own thing. It's got nothing to do with the ward that you're in. So, I believe Option A, and I'm not familiar with what was presented last time, but I believe Option A meets the main criteria of equalizing the population and coming up with what I'll call manageable units, political units. The impact on the Eagle Brook neighborhood, I think, is going to be negligible, based on my experience being a neighborhood that is a mix of political unit boundaries. So, I prefer Option A to Option B, and then personally, although skipping ahead, I think Option C is a nonstarter because one of the wards is bifurcated. You can't, that's totally unten-
Okay. Anything else on, I guess we're on B. Pashki?
Thank you. I concur with a lot of what they both said, so I'm not going to repeat a lot of it. I actually still prefer the redistricting by population that was presented last week. I think Alderperson Bowring made a really good point about focusing on the primary goals that are stated in the ordinance and everywhere else, that compactness is important, equal representation is important, and I think when we start getting into the weeds about streets and all of that, I think we risk looking like we're choosing our voters and we're trying to meddle too much in something that honestly is better done by machines at this point. So, I would prefer to stick with redistricting by population in the first iteration it was presented in. It does get us the closest to equal numbers in the districts. I know it's not by a whole lot, but I think that it's incumbent on us to do the best we can to meet the letter of the law. And I agree, too, that our wards are, I mean, most people probably don't know what ward they live in, and when they need help, they reach out to somebody they know. I think we're all happy to help anybody else's constituent and pass them off, you know, as appropriate. If I know someone in your neighborhood, I'm happy to help them and share what I can, and I assume everybody else here is doing the best they can by people that I know that live in their wards, too. So, yeah. I also would agree, I think it's been stated before, that it would be nice to set up a process to make sure that this happens every time there's a census. I don't anticipate Geneva's population changing as significantly as it has since the last time these maps were drawn, but I do think that it would be smart to get ahead of this and be prepared for the next census, so that we have a procedure in place to make sure that the map is reviewed, numbers are looked at, and adjustments are done well enough ahead of time so that it doesn't feel like a last-minute thing. I know I brought it up last year, because I think I was the one that had to get twice as many signatures as everyone else, which still isn't, you know, too much, but knowing that it was brought up over a year ago, that we discussed it at strategic planning, I think it would be irresponsible to delay. I didn't actually notice until Administrator Dawkins was reading it earlier, but it actually states that when it's determined that it should be done, it should be done immediately. So, I think it's important to heed that as well. So, yeah, that's, I think that's all I have.
Swanson?
Thank you, Dean. A quick question. The changes from what was presented a week ago by population and Option A, my understanding is that it took, it moved the boundary of Ward 5 and Ward 3, or Ward 1, I'm sorry, to Third Street, and moved Cambridge to Randall, and those were the only two changes?
That is correct.
Okay, and to me, I think both those changes make sense, a lot of sense, as Alderperson Bruno mentioned, and to have just one little section of a neighborhood crossing Randall didn't make sense to me. So, I prefer the Option A that has been presented today over the other options, and I agree with Alderperson Maladra that Option C is a nonstarter. I would say also because the population is not even distributed evenly. So, I would put my hat in the ring for Option A. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Anyone has any comments on C? Bowring?
I was curious, so I asked Stephanie this question before the meeting. So, the two changes between the map we saw last week in Option A, moving the boundary at Third Street so that it would be shared resulted in a change of 14 people, so the population changes by 14. Moving the boundary at Cambridge is a bigger one, it's 96 people. That gives me a little pause, just because, like I said, then we're going from 20.5% to 20.9% for the fourth ward, at the same time that we're also, you know, diminishing the second ward by that same number of people. So, that is the change that, or so, my preference is for Option A, but putting Cambridge back into the second ward, as per the original version that we saw, so that we come, I think, as close as is really practicable to an even split, which is, I don't know which ward then has 19.5% or something, or if it's split between a bunch of wards, but then I think we're coming, in my mind, really as close as is practicable to an even split. Thank you.
Sorry, Brett, I missed you before-
Oh, no, I was waiting-
Kossarag?
I was waiting for all the comments on the maps. I didn't want to interrupt that, but I do have something to say, as most people here know. That's well timed now. Since I've expressed my concern for the lack of time for due diligence on this issue- Since I've expressed my concern for the lack of time for due diligence on this issue, I've been called privileged, accused of undermining democracy itself, and have been told that no one cares about the ward districting anyway. While the latter may prove to be true, I think the public and the council should have the appropriate time to consider the options being put forward. I believe the council should take public feedback into consideration on this issue. We have made a lot of situat, we have voted in a lot of situations that are time-critical lately. Those can be frustrating from the public, but it makes sense from our end when you're working with developers and land and funding and whatnot. This is not one of those situations. We are not in violation of any state law or even our own ordinances, and it was, if it was, or there was a significant mandate, I would have thought that staff or and/or council members would have brought this up before essentially what I'm going to call the last minute, being just a matter of weeks before we have to get this done. We were busy. I don't fault anyone for pushing it back, but the truth is, we don't have a mandate to rush this through. Therefore, I suggest we, I propose the redistricting be delayed until next year, when we can research and implement best practices and give the public enough time to take in who they're voting for, as well as why that has changed. I'm not sure what population shifts and growth in Geneva might see in the next 10, 20 years, but given that our beloved city is already practically built out, this redistricting may be the last one for many, many years to come. So, I don't know if I need to make a motion to postpone to a date certain. Ron or Attorney Sandak, if you can help me with that, or if we can just take an informal vote. I'm open to feedback from the chair as well.
I, I think that you raise a point, and I guess it's a topic of discussion. You're proposing that we more or less table this until the future, at some point in time, next year, is what you said, I believe.
I think.
Maybe, before we go any further with the discussion of the various wards and how they would be composed, I guess we'd need to hear from you then. Are you making that as some type of a motion, then?
Well, that's what I'm asking for feedback from the chair or from the attorney on.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be a motion to defer to a date uncertain would be the motion.
I'll make a motion to postpone this issue until a date uncertain, and I'll leave it at that.
Can we have a discussion about?
Sure.
I have some questions.
We can discuss.
Do we need to approve the motion?
First of all, or second to the motion?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we need a second before we even.
Okay, so I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Ruby.
Because I have questions.
Now, Ruby, discussion, or did you?
Yes, I just, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what the concerns or issues are about why, why we need to wait, and who.
The main reason that I'm suggesting waiting is that there's been no effort to include the public in any of these decisions. There's, yeah, it's on the agenda, I get it, but we all know how that is. I think there should be an announcement. We should invite feedback electronically, in person, I'm open to options, but the bottom line is, no matter what we do, we don't have time to do it before we put this into an ordinance before the election.
Okay, so are you getting pushback? Do you think, do you think people are uncomfortable about?
Well, I've gotten several eye rolls just since I started talking.
No, I mean, in your, in the community, are people concerned about being put in a different ward? Because my thought is, people don't even know what ward they're in.
That's what a lot of people have told me, and I think I addressed that in that little statement I read. I don't really understand the, well, nobody cares anyway, because then we should just be talking about moving to at-large, at-large representation in the city. So either the wards matter, and I don't think there's personally any reason to advocate for keeping a community of interest together, or it doesn't matter, and we should be talking about moving to another system in the city of Geneva. It's got to be one or the other. I don't believe it can be both. So either it doesn't matter because everybody in Geneva calls whoever they know anyway, which I agree with, we all get calls outside our ward, we all try to help them, we're all partners in helping each other up here, but I don't think that addresses what I see as essentially rushing through this process at the last minute.
Okay, so.
Without public feedback.
So, public feedback. So back to just, just in, to have a candid conversation with you about public feedback, I, I don't know that we're going to get it, and I say that based on how much public participation we get in general, so.
I don't, I wouldn't know, and I would say that you're correct. There's likely to be none or zero. You know, it reminds me a lot when I was on Planning and Zoning Commission, and we were approving the library. Nobody showed up to give any feedback. Literally, zero people showed up to give the feedback on the library. And I said, "Why is that the case?" And they said, "Well, because the library did such good vetting that everybody knew it." Probably true, but I thought it was weird, and so I asked the commission to delay it by a week or two weeks, I think it was, and we all agreed to do that. We still didn't get any feedback, but I still believe it was the right thing to do. It was another call for feedback, and then now look, we all hear varied feedback on the library. And, you know, we can point to a specific time that we not only gave them the opportunity to speak, we extended it for them. And I felt good about that motion then, the commission then approved it, and it's very similar to the situation now.
Okay, so I, I would be okay with putting this map out to, like, on our website, announcing it to the public, and say, "This is the plan for redistricting, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, and the final vote will take place January 25." Something, something to those.
I don't think we need to set a date. The motion was to a date uncertain.
Okay, but is that, would that accomplish?
That's kind of what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, so just to give.
Let's attack this as a real important issue next year, when everybody in the city of Geneva can understand what we're doing. If they choose not to understand, they choose not to participate, that's fine, but just because they don't know about it now, or we don't think they'll have it, they'll want to be interested. Just because we don't think they want to be interested, I don't think is a reason not to follow what I would consider best practices.
Sure. So, and just one more thing to play devil's advocate. People have the opportunity to be educated on everything we talk about by tuning in, and it's.
The first meeting wasn't televised or put out on audio.
That's true, okay. So, so we, so it comes down to, it boils down to one meeting, one conversation, one public conversation about this.
We're being asked to put forward by consensus, a specific map for the city council to vote on, presumably sometime soon.
Okay. Yeah, I, I really don't think the public is going to be upset by this, but I feel like you have gotten a different vibe than.
This is, this is me. I'm not, I'm representing my community, I'm representing my ward. This is what I think is the right thing for my ward.
Okay.
I haven't gone out and sought people to support me or anything like that. This is something I brought up, as everybody knows.
Okay.
Since that meeting. After the meeting last week, I was very bothered about the deadlines coming up so quickly.
Okay, so, and.
Obviously, you can tell I feel really.
Sure, so.
I just don't, I just don't think this is a casual thing. I mean, Anisa's great, great feedback, Bob's got a bunch of notes here, I can see. Everybody has different opinions. Why would we choose one map and go straight to city council? I just can't understand redistricting that's probably going to be here for decades. It's been decades since we last did it. So that's not an unreasonable, that is not an exaggeration.
Okay. So I support waiting. I just, I think if we're going to do that, though, we need to promote some community education on this. It has to be part of the package, part of the plan.
That's what I would hope.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Brett.
Alderman.
Thank.
Alderperson Malandra, I think you have the floor.
So I'm glad you mentioned this could be in place for decades, because the ward map that we're moving away from was in place for nearly 30 years. It came together in the same timeframe that we're proposing here, and I do not see anything that showed that that process was flawed and hurt the people of Geneva. In fact, that process worked on a redistricting that has done us well for 30 years. Let's not fool ourselves. This was not proposed or put together in a haphazard fashion. We got together in November, we decided this was important and needed to be done in November, and then staff has been working, trying to put together a solution that met all these conflicting criteria. I would even be willing to bet that most of the objections we've heard about keeping Eagle Brook whole, about moving the boundary on Third Street, they considered as well and tried to make it all work, but the criteria end up being like a giant Jenga tower. You emphasize one too much, and the whole thing falls down. We don't have to do anything tonight, we have until October. If the community is interested, we can publish this tonight, and we can see community impact or input well before the October deadline. Doesn't have to be pushed back to some date in 2025. The law requires that it be in place prior to an upcoming election. We have an election coming up in the spring. This is the exact timeframe that we did in 90-whatever, when it was done before. I also want to emphasize again that I'm uncomfortable with the idea of government by referendum, and I believe that the attempt to seek public input is getting really close to that. It's a representative government. We understand the criteria that are required in coming up with this map more than the public does. If the public did come out, I don't know even in a year that they would be willing to become as familiar as we are with all the ins and outs that go into this kind of thing. So at the end of the day, it falls on us to make a decision, and that's going to be true a year from now, and it's going to be just as challenging a year from now. Time is not going to make this simpler. In fact, I think the time is just going to complicate it more as we think of more things that we would like staff to try and see how that works out. So I don't see the need to delay into next year. I could see delaying past two weeks, if need be, publicize the heck out of it, get people to come in and comment, and we can move and adjust between now and the October deadline. Thanks.
I think, I think the problem with that is, though, the circulation of petitions and trying to determine what ward you're in if we would delay it, let's say, until the end of September, right?
Yeah, so, well, I mean, petitions are first due on November 12th.
They're due then, right, but if you started.
So it would shorten the timeframe unless you knew.
Unless you projected where you were going to end up, yeah.
Or at least for those who aren't changing wards, nothing.
Well, let me ask this then, when are petitions polled?
They'll start August 20th.
State moved everything up this year.
Because, again, the legislature moved everything up by 28 days, and that just happened, that, so that was not something that was contemplated back in November.
Well, as I, as I said, I have past experience to draw on. I wasn't involved with it, I didn't move here till 97, but I know that it was done, and I know that Geneva was not harmed or hurt, or in any way negatively affected by it. And I don't see anything looking ahead that tells me that this exercise and this map is going to be any more harmful or detrimental to our best interests over the long term than the last exercise was. I believe that this is an exercise that the public, I'm not trying to make it sound like the public is disinterested. There are some things that they can have, have the time to become expert enough on to add value to in times when it's not in their bailiwick, and this would be one of those times, in my opinion. Thanks.
I believe Pashke's next, and then Bruno.
So I agree, in general, that resident feedback is helpful or useful, or there's a reason that it's good to be transparent and ask for public feedback in a lot of situations. I guess my question on this is, what would we do with the feedback necessarily? Because I think, to Alderperson Malandra's point, the feedback that we get may not even be feedback that we can incorporate, and then you end up with people that are upset because they think they weren't listened to, but I see it going in a vicious circle and maybe causing more problems, and not to say that I don't think the public should be involved. Maybe there's a way to do that, and I guess I'd be open to some sort of short window, maybe if we could close it by mid-September, something like that. But I will say that I'm on a large distribution list in the community that got notified, got notified days ago about this being discussed tonight, and I didn't even get an email, and nobody's here. So I would tend to agree that I don't think we would actually get much input, and if we did, I don't know what we would do with it, a value beyond what the computers can do with the numbers that keep things consistent and in line with what's expected of us at this time. So I'm still more comfortable with just moving forward with, and I would be okay with the redistricting by population that was previously presented, or option A, which is a little less favorable, but I'll leave it at that.
Bruno?
Thank you. This is driven by, mostly by statutory needs. To the point of at-large representation, that would be a nonstarter for me. I've seen communities where basically wealthy older retirees get to run, and they're all from one neighborhood, and doesn't, doesn't do a good job. But if our best practices are as compact as practicable, contiguous, I'm not sure what additional input can do but make it more difficult to satisfy everybody. I think we've gotten really close, and if we need equal population, one of these two maps is either last week's or this week's, it's gotten really close. I don't see, I really don't see value in delaying it. I'm empathetic to the discussion of public input, but my state and federal districts, no one consults me, I have never had any input there. I just look at my new.
Gerrymandered map.
New gerrymandered map, and my voter registration, find out, you know, who my representative is. It's worked for me. So, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supportive of delaying it. Thank you.
Moring?
Like Alderperson Pashke and Alderperson Bruno, I also do not support delaying this past the window at which it could apply to this election. I think that's genuinely doing a disservice to the residents of Geneva. I think we owe to them, now that we have realized how out of balance the wards are. I think if we want to be doing our best to follow state statute and to follow the principle of one person, one vote, which people had to fight really hard to get legislatures to actually do that, and not just to, you know, count trees and land as worthwhile as actual people, then I, I think we do need to take this up in a timely manner. I think Alderperson Pashke made a great point, and it relates to something else I wanted to bring up. So we didn't really get into it tonight, but at our last meeting, Administrator Dawkins took us through part of the process that she and staff went through in generating the proposal that she brought us last week, and I sat down with her to talk a little bit more about some of those. But basically, I think the risk of soliciting public input and then not being able to satisfy them is pretty real, because the options we're seeing are, like, some of the only ones that will not throw us into a situation where we have three alderpersons in one ward, two of whom maybe don't go up for election until 2027. where we have three older persons in one ward, two of whom maybe don't go up for election until 2027. State statute is really vague about how you handle that. Now, it's not our job to protect incumbents, but in terms of coming up for the next election. But I think we want to try to avoid a chaotic situation where we have, you know, do we add an older person for a temporary period? I don't know if we're allowed to. Do you then have a ward who only has one dedicated older person and then someone else is at large for some period of time? Then how does that work the next election? I think it, it opens up a real kind of horrendous can of worms in terms of how, how we do this in a way that is going to feel actually transparent and reasonable to the populace. You know, in our conversation outside of our meeting, Alder Person Kocarog, I, I wanted to try to understand. I, I think if there, if there are concerns about harms in the redistricting, I'm interested to hear them. I haven't heard them. I understand the concern about the process feeling like it's moving too quickly. But I, I don't think it's moving so quickly. I think we have adequate time to think about it and talk about it. And I think this is part of our job as elected representatives to make sure that we are, you know, making sure that the wards are in balance. So, I guess, I, I mean, in some ways, I think Alder Person Pashki made the most compelling point. If we pause this to solicit input and then we can't practically put any of that into effect, which in my opinion, we likely cannot, then I think, I think we, we wind up making people more frustrated and more distrustful of the political process overall. And then, in addition, I think if you start soliciting or, or trying in effect to like make communities of interest, which often have previously formed around something that they are trying to accomplish or a service they have been denied or, you know, in, in state districts, you have some criteria that's spelled out to have majority and minority districts. A lot of that doesn't apply here. And I feel like if we open that up, it's going to create a lot more division. And, and really then, who are you satisfying? You're, you're appeasing one group but having to take something away from another group. I think something, I think we've gotten basically as close as we're going to get to something that achieves an even balance of population without engendering like a legal morass. And I'm open to delaying a bit. I think because our next meeting is a special meeting, this wouldn't come up on the twelfth. But I'm not in favor of delaying to a date uncertain and therefore not having it apply to this election cycle. I think that's a disservice. I think then when people come and ask us why we didn't do something sooner, we don't have a good answer. Well, because we couldn't understand the process. I feel like I understand how we got here. I also, I also will say, I mean, we could also set a procedure to check in more frequently than every ten years. I would like to see us check in certainly after every decennial census. But, you know, it seems like the history of this is that it actually did happen more frequently in the past. It happened a number of times in the eighties and nineties, and then there's this big gap. I think, I think, I think that's the problem in some ways because the growth in population did get beyond what I think it was probably envisioned to be in nineteen ninety-seven. Is this the one that was ninety-seven and the compensation was ninety-six? It doesn't matter. So, I, I certainly want people that are contemplating running in the next election to have time to circulate petitions. I think as long as we're adhering to state statute, you know, then even if it's a somewhat compressed window, then they, they have the window the state thinks they need. My preference would be to, to come back and talk about this, would be to settle on one of these options and then to come back and talk about it in two weeks. I think if we delay by a week or two beyond that, I'm okay with that, but nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. More discussion on this?
Only just, just one quick question.
Gus Rod?
Alderman Bowery, even though two Aldermen are in present, you still want to pick one tonight? So, not even, not even the council has complete input.
So, this is the case with every issue that comes before the cow. I mean, there, we have a council of ten so that there's a quorum. I think that, you know, when people are gone, people have other obligations, but they go knowing that there could be something...
Just yes is fine. It's no problem.
I, I think it's my decision...
I don't need a long explanation. You're okay with it then, is what you're saying, right?
I'd prefer if you didn't interrupt me. That starts to feel a little bit rude. So, if I'm being long-winded and you don't like it, I'm sorry for that. I will try to keep it concise. But you asked me a question. I think I get to decide how long the answer is. Yes, I'm okay with forwarding something to city council. It's not going to be on the consent agenda. We get to have another vote at city council. I don't think they're being disenfranchised from their vote. This is how city council works. When you're absent, sometimes you only get one pass at an issue. I will note that both of them were here at our previous discussion and had the opportunity to offer input during that discussion as well.
Okay. Without objection, I'd like to just take a straw vote to see if we have a motion on, on the floor that you'd like to suspend a decision on this to a date uncertain. And I guess I would like to know who would be in favor of suspending to a date uncertain.
Would you prefer we call a vote?
No, I'm asking, we... Do you want to read the roll?
I mean, here's a motion and a second.
Okay. Let's read the roll then. It's good.
Kocarog?
Nay.
You want to vote aye for your motion, I believe.
It's your vote.
This is your motion to amend.
The amendment. We're voting on the amendment.
Yeah, sorry. Aye.
Maladra?
Nay.
Pashki?
Nay.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowery?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Nay. It's six-two. So, six-two, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, the amendment is defeated. So, with that, then, let's go to the, the various options that are in front of the council and that we've discussed. Is there anyone prepared to make a motion on one of the specific options so that we can, can try to move this along? Bowery.
I move that we adopt the option presented last week with the alteration of moving the boundary at Third Street to include Ward One on the east side of Third Street.
Is that clear to everyone? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Okay, discussion on this option, if there's anything that we haven't discussed. And this was the original option that was presented last week.
Yeah, so this was the option based on population last week because you had a precinct or population. So, it was the population option. And the only change that is being recommended is the one line on Third Street, which is the fourteen inhabitants. Instead of being in Ward Five, they would go to Ward One. So, the line would go right up Third Street.
So, that would be the only modification as it relates to last week's...
Correct, as, as the motion was made, yes.
As the motion was made. And there's a second, and you, you agree with that. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Now, discussion on that. Bruno, you have the floor.
In last week's discussion, the West State Street was stayed in Ward One. That wasn't changed either.
Yeah, correct. So, the dividing line is at, I think it went down James.
That's James, yeah.
Yeah. Dividing line, again, I'll try to show. The dividing line went along James.
Okay.
So, that stayed the same. This all stayed the same. This is all the same. The only change is moving this block, one block west.
Okay. Thank you.
This over here, that's green, would be gray under last week's proposal.
Ruby.
Thank you. Is it possible to just eliminate options B and C right now? And then I, I would like to review option A that I'm looking at and your original option that I haven't seen because it hasn't been made public.
Okay.
And then we can go from there at our next meeting.
Will you make a motion then to...
Well, there's a motion right now. So, if, if you want to amend that motion or if you want to make a second motion to put, essentially, if I'm hearing you, Alder Person, you want to move both items.
Yes.
For...
I would like to advance two options for further consideration.
Then I think you can address the one presently before the board. And then you can move the option A if you wish.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one right down. That should probably get a vote.
Right. Okay, we have the option that was moved and seconded. And is there an amendment to that?
To, is that correct?
I wouldn't recommend an amendment. I'd recommend a second vote, a second motion. Yeah.
But if we...
You still have the floor, Ruby.
If we approve the motion on the table right now, then we're done. No?
And that would remove B and C?
You're, you're done to the extent that that would be the one that would be forwarded to the city council for full consideration.
Okay. Right.
So, essentially, that would eliminate B and C.
Right, but it would also eliminate A as presented.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So, do we do a roll call on that then before we get confused?
Let's do, let's do, I'm sorry, Pashki, you have the, the floor. Your comment?
Yes, can I just ask if we wanted to make a recommendation to do regular review of population like every five years, do we attach that as an amendment to this or do we make that a, another motion?
I would say make that a sec, a separate item.
Okay.
Separate apart from these particular votes and maps, but I think it's certainly a good motion.
Can I add that to my motion?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so could I add to the motion that every five years, a survey be done of the population?
So, if I may, I think we're going to confuse it because right now, at every decennial, based on population, wards and older persons may change. The council then makes a decision at that point whether to, they want to keep them the same or go with the new. So, it would be at that point, when you're making that determination, that I think you would also be looking at redistricting because should your wards increase based on population, you would automatically have to redistrict at that point. If at that point you decide, the council that's sitting at that point decides to keep the older persons at the same size, so back in 2022, an ordinance was passed to remain at five wards, ten older persons versus fourteen ward, seven wards and fourteen older persons. So, if you make that ordinance to remain at five and ten, that would also be the time to look at your redistricting. So, I think they go hand in hand.
But it seems like that didn't happen. So, I mean, because we're still, we're looking at the numbers from that decennial census.
Right, because it wasn't brought up at that time. And I guess all I'm saying is, and then at any other time, if you want to do it sooner, you can. But I think for purposes of tonight, I think you're, you're further complicating this issue. And then you can come back and make a separate motion on that issue, is what Attorney Sandek...
Tonight or at another time?
You can do it tonight. You can do it another time. But that was the recommendation of Attorney Sandek is to not kind of co-mingle these two items right here, right now.
Gotcha. Okay.
This gets to Alder Person Ruby's question, I think. So, if we advance, if the motion on the floor passes, then at the next city council meeting, that's the starting point for the discussion. I think at that point, if somebody wanted to say, well, I think that we should push the thing from Third Street over and make the Cambridge Spur green instead of gray, they could, they could suggest that at city council. It may be voted up or down. So, what we do tonight isn't, you know...
Final.
Thank you.
Okay. I think, as you pointed out, what will come back to the council will be the one that we're voting on now if it passes and that there'd be an opportunity to, to amend that when, when it's before the council. Is that clear to everyone? Okay. I think we're ready. We have a motion and a second then. Everyone is clear on what we're, we're voting on? Would you please read your roll?
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Nay.
Maladra?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
I believe that's six-two. So, it passes. So, this will come back before the council on the nineteenth?
Correct.
Okay. So, with that, I think that...
And it won't be on consent because it's six-two, so we'll have that opportunity. I recommend your other item to talk about under new business. And then we can come back with an ordinance to consider at, at a future, at the next count.
So, this evening, we have an opportunity for public comment. Mike, anything further you'd like to add? Thanks for staying with us. You're patient tonight. Very patient. Under new business, I'd just like to extend a thank you to Public Works and then all the mutual aid support that we received from around Kane County to clear the brush. I think that they did an incredible job with the number of limbs that were at the street following the storm. And I think they accomplished it in a matter of about seven or eight business stays. So, our thanks to all those that were involved in making that happen. Any other new business for the council?
Yes, I'd like to request that staff create a, a recommendation for reviewing population distribution between wards at regular intervals, whether it's five or ten years, whatever makes the most sense.
And then we're just looking for a consensus that that is the direction the majority of the council would like to go.
I think ten makes sense.
I like ten.
I think ten for using the census.
And that's still part of that recommendation, so thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Kocarog. Those in favor signify by saying aye. It carries. Good night.